Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you tonight to the regular meeting of the City of Hayden Council. It is Tuesday, October 24th, and it is 5:01 PM. We'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to ask Council President Matt Roder to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Black United States of America, to the Constitution of the United States, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, do we have any additions?
Yes. Abby, could I please have a roll call of council members?
Council President Roder?
Yes.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
And Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Satterfield has a terrible head cold, and thank you for not giving it to us, Roger, and being able to join us on Zoom here. All right, council members.
You're welcome.
Council members, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? Hearing none. Our first order of business.
Mayor?
Yes.
I thought one of the things we were going to change was 5A.
No, actually, we will still keep that as an agenda item, and we have Ms. Melissa Fleetwood here to discuss that with us.
Okay, okay, so it doesn't... Got it, yeah. Okay, thank you, sure.
And ladies and gentlemen, before we even get into Item 1A, the folks who have the property on the south side of our building are quite upset that Hayden citizens are using that for parking for coming to the meetings. I would appreciate it if, when you are coming here to our meetings and looking for parking areas, if you would use someplace other than the south side of the building. It's between us and the Mexican restaurant there. Thank you very much. My first order of business is to the Bacon Bank. Yes, ma'am. My first action tonight is to give a proclamation. Whereas Hayden is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas the Hayden City Council acknowledges the mission of the Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2023. Now therefore, I, Scott Frissell, Mayor of Hayden, Idaho, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2023, to be Extra Mile Day. I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in their own life, but also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitments to make their organizations, their families, their community, country, or world a better place. Thank you. Our next item, and folks probably have an agenda there, is Item Number 2, the Consent Calendar. City of Hayden does business five days a week, nine hours a day. Many of the things that the City of Hayden does and the staff do do not require any oversight from the City Council. However, some things that the city is engaged in do require approval of council. It is also called the Consent of Council. And tonight, on our Consent Calendar, we have Item 2A, the approval of the October 10, 2023 City Council Meeting Minutes; 2B, the approval of Hayden Chamber European Christmas Market Event Permit; the application, the loudspeaker request, and the support agreement; 2C, the approval of FY24 Cootenay County Public Transportation Letter of Agreement; 2D, approval of the Fiscal Year 2023 Fourth Quarter Treasurer's Report; 2E, the ratification of bills paid on 10/11, 10/16, and 10/20, 2023; and 2F, the approval of bills for payment. Council members, do you have any questions or comments regarding items on the Consent Calendar?
Mayor, I have just one. It's not a question, it's just that if you look at our revenue and expenditure report for the City of Hayden, ending September 30th, 2023, you'll see that there's a percent of budget used on the far-right corner. You're going to see some really large numbers there. And all those large numbers, the percent change, is due to we're doing a lot better on interest that we're getting from where we have our money invested, which is good because interest rates have gone up, as you probably know, quite high, and we do invest our money into a state fund that's very safe. Like most taxing entities, they utilize that fund. I just want to point that out, that we anticipate an interest to be a lot less, and we're doing a lot better. That's the only point.
Thank you, Mr. Roder. Other comments or questions from council on Consent Calendar? Hearing none, I would appreciate a motion from council regarding acceptance or not of the Consent Calendar.
I'd like to make the motion, Mayor, that we accept the Consent Calendar as written 2A through 2F.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Calendar. Is there any further discussion from council? Mr. Satterfield?
Yes. Oh, no, I'm sorry. No comment.
It's a little more difficult when you're just on the phone, isn't it? Okay.
It is, much.
Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember DePree?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes. Motion passes. Our next section of our agenda tonight is the Visitor Public Comment. Ladies and gentlemen, if you wish to speak, please fill out a card at the table in the back of the room and bring it to us here at the front. It looks something like this. Public comments are limited to five minutes. At approximately the four-minute mark, I will wave a paper similar to this to let you know you have one minute remaining. We expect commenters to be respectful of other citizens and council members. Personal attacks are not allowed. Council will not hear comments on any planning and zoning matter that's before the city or is known to be a likely application. And finally, when it's your turn to speak, please approach the podium here and state your name and whether you reside within the Hayden City limits, and please direct your comments towards the council. First commenter that we have tonight is Rachel Rochelle, pardon me, Odison.
A Hayden City Councilman running for reelection has said something to the effect, "I would appreciate your vote, as we don't want Hayden to become a chaotic mess like NIC. It seems to me that the people who talk the most and loudest about hoping not to create another NIC tend to be the exact ones who, right before an election, do all they can to set things up to have a dysfunctional organization, just in case conservatives get a majority. Are you copying the latest leftist playbook by pushing the moderate administrator out and ramming through hiring an absolute shark who is experienced at preventing the conservatives from getting anything done and trying to make their lives miserable by setting them up with lose-lose choices? No matter what they do, they'll be made to look bad. And then, just like the Soviet communist propaganda outlet, our own local Pravda will get to work spinning its leftist lies on the public. It will trumpet any perceived failures by the conservatives, even though it'll be the statist causing the problems. And I imagine part of the dirty deal will be an unheard-of contract, paying an exorbitant sum and making it nearly impossible to fire the administrator, even when the administrator is quite obviously working against the organization, even helping to destroy its reputation and operations. Almost sounds like a modern, more sophisticated bunch of brown shirts who instigate all the problems and then try to promise to be the answer to the problems. My main point is that if you care at all about the Hayden City Council, slow down and let the new council choose someone they can work with. Otherwise, you are the ones ensuring a dysfunctional organization and tarnishing its reputation. Many of us have noticed the ruinous pattern. I hope the public sees through the evil leftist plot and votes for Luke Summer and Tom Shaver. Thank you."
Mayor, did she answer the question? Is she from Hayden? Are you from Hayden?
Oh, no.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Jeff Coder. And if you could please speak your name into the microphone, Mr. Coder, and state whether or not you are a citizen of Hayden. Thank you very much.
Yes, my name is Jeff Coder, and I live in Hayden. And it's come to my attention...
The mic is on for the recording. If you need a hearing device, I have one available.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, it's come to my attention that recently Sandy White made a motion to ask for $400 to make a big, kind of a bulletin board for transparency, so people in the city, you know, citizens can see what the council's doing. And it was all voted down by you guys, but yet you spend a lot of money trying to do a study to have our own police force and not contract with the Cootenay County Sheriff anymore, which, that's a very draconian idea in my mind, because if you have a police chief, then he is going to be accountable to the mayor and not the Constitution. So we will lose any constitutional representation by not having county sheriff deputies. Okay? And that's, plus the additional cost, we cannot afford to have, you know, to pay the salaries for all our own cops and all the benefits and all that stuff. So, you know, you'll spend money for that, but you won't spend a small amount of money for transparency. So I have a problem with that. The other thing that's come to my attention is one of your city council members, Mr. DePree, has doxed Luke Summer. And I think that's a very unethical thing to do, and made disparaged remarks about him and his family. So I'm just putting it out there in public record that that's what's been going on. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sir, just to clarify a point of fact, the city has spent $0 on investigating whether or not it should have its own police force.
Yeah, so far, but in the future, who knows?
Our next commenter is Teresa Roth.
I am a Hayden homeowner, and I am the proud grandmother of five Hayden grandchildren. I'm going to talk about the city administrator, sort of best hopes and worst fears, and sort of the whole process. So in the next few days, the Hayden City Council will be hiring a new city administrator, which is probably going to be one of the most important decisions you guys make. And some people don't realize how important city administrator is, because even though I've been watching how cities work for a while, and even though it's true that the city council oversees things, it is actually the city administrator who runs the city government, and for the city to operate well, the city administrator must have the full support and trust of the elected officials. So who will be Hayden's next administrator? It was mentioned in the last city council meeting that about 20 people are overapplied, and then three finalists were selected by a consultant associated with an international group of city managers who probably had a great deal of sort of insider information about this stuff, because he's very experienced at it. Anyway, he selected three finalists. Those finalists will be interviewed later this week by city council members in executive session. Therefore, no members of the community will be able to see what questions are asked or how they are answered. This is unfortunate, and we cannot help but contrast this secretive process to the selection of a mayor just 18 months ago, when everything was done openly, including the candidate interviews. So we can't help wonder why so much secrecy for the administration and why the rush? The selection of a city administrator is scheduled for 1 o'clock next Monday. And in addition to making a final choice on the selection of an administrator, at that same meeting, the council will be voting on the terms of their contract. Both of these decisions are of enormous importance, but ironically, the terms of the new city administrator's employment contract might be just as important as the decision of who the new city administrator is. Why is the employment contract so important? Because the terms and conditions of the city administrator's contract will determine who he is answerable to and how reliant he is on the goodwill of the city council. This is an issue because in the last few years, there have been a few well-known cases where an outgoing Board of Trustees hired a new chief administrator and intentionally put terms of his contract made him virtually impossible to replace. And we've seen how this works out. The drama, the newly elected, the newly selected administrator is not accountable to the newly elected board. There is legal wrangling, and at the first sign of conflict, ICRAMP, Idaho's local government insurance program, withdraws coverage. Unneeded drama and orchestrated chaos. This type of sabotage of city government is exactly what Hayden residents do not want to see. It is critical for the new city administrator to get along with the incoming city council, whether or not he is politically aligned with them. And if he can't get along with them, there must be a relatively painless way to hire a replacement. Elected officials can be removed from office if they violate the trust of their citizens, and city administrators must likewise be accountable to elected officials. Fortunately, I do not expect Hayden to have the same problems that the conservative boards of NIC and CLN had. In the first place, I doubt city officials would write a contract for a new administrator with terms that were so rigged that they would throw the whole city into chaos. But even more importantly, Hayden is not like NIC or the Community Library Network. Both of these institutions are culturally leftist with a deeply politicized workforce, and the conservative boards elected to run them are at odds with the vast majority of employees. The opposite situation is true in Hayden. The conflict in Hayden is not between liberals and conservatives, but between central planners who are intent on densifying the city and Hayden homeowners who just want to prevent globalist visionaries from destroying their community. The fact is, conservative homeowners represent the vast majority of the electorate, and any city administrator who feels threatened by such a constituency should not be applying for and should not accept the position as Hayden's city administrator. Thank you.
Our next commenter is Mr. Paul Malo.
My name is Paul Malo. I am a resident impacted by Hayden, mayor, council, and staff. I'm concerned about the growth of the city, as referenced in the last survey, a concern regarding a standing police committee and commission and establishing a police force. I'm a retired person on a fixed income. I see Hayden on a path to ever-increasing property taxes. Hayden was established as a residential community related to Coeur d'Alene. There is no city center of older buildings, as we see in Post Falls and Rathrum in Coeur d'Alene itself. There are no businesses of hotels needing law enforcement support, and that was the basis of the Hayden low-tax structure. That is why they had such a low taxing rate related to law enforcement. From the sheriff's campaign for passing the levy last year, it appears locations requiring the most support are under urban renewal, who does not pay a fair share of taxes to Hayden, as the sheriff likes to accuse Hayden of not paying the county. Urban renewal suggested increasing housing density and affordable housing after being briefed on the Hayden public survey. Kind of a remarkable suggestion, considering the results of the Hayden survey. That would surely increase law enforcement requirements and burden on tax structure. A police force inevitably increases taxes. Housing development increases the burden on staff, on infrastructure, and on emergency agencies. There are only hard questions and decisions ahead for the city council and city staff. The tax code is important to be adjusted to protect the elderly that live on fixed incomes and have lived here over 20 years, that have been paying their fair share for a very long time. The burden must be shifted to property owners who buy properties speculatively in the area and then rezone to develop and profit. Thank you.
Our next commenter is Mr. Russ McLean.
Hi, guys. Russ McLean, Cootenay County, but we own three properties here in Hayden. First, this misnomer there from the last speaker, Hayden Boat Ramp outpaces Walmart by 100 calls. Okay, so, and that's not an urban renewal. I came to talk about the sheriff and the contract. I worked on the panel. We were guaranteed by Norris to have 10 deputies in Hayden. We were guaranteed, right there in the meeting, and I don't see that happening. I think Matt's correct. It was a bright idea to have tracking devices in their car so you can monitor whether you're getting what you paid for, or is the money you're paying for going for joy rides in a helicopter? These are the things you have to be really careful about. I know that Norris's old boss is a dear friend of mine, and first thing, what they said, the first thing he will do when he gets elected is get rid of anybody smarter than him, and he's done that. So basically, they're a bunch of dummies, okay? And they were right, you know, so...
Mr. McLean?
Uh-huh.
Need to be respectful of folks that we're talking about tonight.
Well, I am. Believe me, I am. Abby's here, I would do nothing across her. These are facts, you know? So, you know, I think that having a clear monitoring of the money that you guys are spending is warranted, and I think Matt is right on that. I think that was a smart idea, maybe not the right idea, there might be other ways of doing that, but I think it should be done. I know that in the old days, if I wanted to invite Wolfing or out for coffee or tacos, you pushed nine. Well, we had two deputies on our street last week, which is rare, and it got all my old neighbors worried, so I called, and I called the administration and right to dispatch. So that makes for a call to service, okay? So that, you know, his numbers can be skewed pretty easily that way, and you have to keep that in mind. And I think that you guys could hire a police department and serve the citizens well with four to five people. Your Ms. Sanchez can be the chief. She's perfectly capable of handling it. Well, you know, I mean, just an administrator. I'm sorry you lost Brett. He's a cool guy. I really liked him. And, but, and then I got an email with regards to your pavers, and we're happy to put them in and paint them and do all that stuff, but I don't want to do anything to benefit if the election goes sour and the KRCC people get elected. That was polite. If we get some good people in here, Roger stays, boof, me and the charter kids will be right there before Veterans Day. And, but that's only being fair. And that's all. I just want to, I want to remind you that Norris guaranteed us, the panel, that we all worked very hard, that we would have 10 deputies, and we're not getting it, but he wants the money. Okay? And so you have to be concerned on where the money's going that you're giving him. And I say go and do his helicopter for joy rides for Leslie Duncan, you know? I mean, you have to really be careful. And I think monitoring every hour, Matt's correct, I think it's an appropriate thing to do. We worked hard, he guaranteed, and he didn't deliver, but he wants his money. So, you know, be careful with what you do. I think you can pull it off with four deputies and Abby running the show. She's perfectly capable. Okay? That's it. Good night.
Thank you. Chief Sanchez. Our next speaker is Susan Lehman.
So Susan Lehman, resident of Hayden. Real quick, first off, just curious, the special meetings that are coming up the next few days, that is to interview, those are different interviews for various candidates for the administrative administrator? What are those? It said hiring, 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 but who is it that's being hired?
City administrator.
The city administrator. Okay, okay, that's what, that's what I figured from what people were saying. So while I'm up here, when I first got to Idaho and to Hayden, I was like, what's an urban renewal? What are you talking about? And the more I have learned about the structure of this, and I understand that the structure was provided for by the state, the more I'm thinking, I don't even see how the structure of this is constitutional. I don't see how it's constitutional for taxpayers to give their money to a non-governmental agency. I don't, I don't understand how that's even legal. So needless to say, I am very much opposed to expanding the urban renewal districts in Hayden. And I've been trying to learn about this, and I did, I did some research on Cootenay County website, and it says taxing districts are required to support all of destructions in populations within their districts, regardless of the funds available to accomplish this. Urban renewal districts often bring new construction and growth to community, but taxing districts don't see the revenue created by this growth until the urban renewal district ends, which is typically around 24 years. So the Walmart is the example that's given all the time, bought, pays $1,300 a year in taxes, and it was bare land at that point, gets built, all right? Now it's painting like $90,000 a year in taxes, which does not go to the city of Hayden. And then Hura turns around and goes, oh, here, let us, let us give you these little, these little dollars, you know, sometimes if you want a little help with something. It was money that should have gone to Hayden in the first place. And then because that money, you know, not just Walmart, but other places, isn't, isn't coming to Hayden, then the poor law enforcement people have to go ask for a levy. So we're not getting the money that Walmart's, you know, supposed to be giving to Hayden, but then the individual taxpayers have to pay more. Talk about reallocating wealth distribution in favor of the people who already have the So the other thing that was on here on the Cootenay County site said urban renewal causes levy rates to increase at a faster rate or in some cases not decrease as much as it would have otherwise. This means each taxpayer is responsible for providing a larger percentage of the taxing district's budget. And I don't understand exactly how this works, but apparently, whatever happens in Hayden, it still affects the other people. It affects everybody else in Cootenay County. You know, the taxing districts and the money that gets taken away, that gets given to Hura in Hayden, also affects other places in Cootenay County, as I said. I don't understand exactly how that works, but it's, it's, what was it? And I couldn't find anything later than 2020, but in 2020, a few years ago, the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency took $873,354. You know, so what has it been since then? So I am very much against... So I am very much against this expansion. I'd like to starve them out, not expand anything until, and I'm not, I'm not blaming, frankly, I'm not blaming the people who are on Hura. That's you guys. You guys make those decisions. You guys decided, I guess, in the beginning, you know, how this was supposed to be structured. The basics were provided by the state, but that's your responsibility to say, no, we want our taxpayers to pay the money to Hayden. You know, you got a project you want to do, you outline the project, you get quotes, you allocate the money, and then you hire a contractor. That's what you do. Thank you.
Next commenter is Jim Harbin.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and City Council. You know who I am, Jim Harbin, resident of Hayden. So I'm just going to get to the point. Two other times I brought up traffic, so I just want to simply say, every day I go down Hayden to Post Falls to take my boy to Christian School over there. So I am your, you don't need to, what do you call those, make a plan or pay someone to do it. You need traffic signals on every major crossing. I believe there's three, like maybe Sergeant would know, Myers, there's another one starts with an H, and then there's one down here by the gas station, if you go down just half a mile from 95. You need three lights there. There has been multiple car accidents. There's been some that had multiple cars in it. You've had some that were severe there, and I see the cars on the north and south trying to get through. They're, they're going 10, 15, 20 cars, and then they're trying to race across, and you know how many times I've had to kind of hit my brakes because they're so desperate to get across? And I'm watching them. I'm not even going that fast, but I have to watch them because some people, you know, if I'm half a block away, they don't do it. They wait till I'm like 100 feet from them, and then they try. So you need, you need stop signs there. Whenever you can do it, sooner the better. Second of all, you have some pads down here on government that are still developing. That's fine. I want to just simply say this, and I've said it before, I'm not trying to insult anybody. I'm just, I'm telling you, I talk to people, and it's like people are clueless or they're asleep. I don't know what the story is. I think they're so bogged down with mainstream media, fake news, that they're hypnotized. Let me give a train of thought, sorry. I got banged up a little bit, so I'm a little bit slow sometimes. You can finish out those businesses. I'm not telling you what to do, it's just a suggestion. Any other businesses you have? You need to have it on 95. If you've got an existing business or vacant land, you can either tear down the old business or put in a new business there. You also need to have your apartments on 95 would be a good idea, because I, I'm not for apartments. I say vote it down, but they're going into more residential areas that are creating heavy traffic and problems. I live in a residential area over there about a mile eastbound of government by the Blue Plate, and I can assure you that all the rental houses are in poor shape, except the one that they took over for a drug thing on Hillview and Dakota that got a little bit of cleaning up. But all the rental houses are troublemakers. They don't keep the houses up. The trees are dying. They're infected. You got one that's on Hillview, a big branch that's been there, and I've come to the city before, and it's just hanging there, and it's going to kill a kid someday. They've had five major branches on that at 10115 North Hillview Drive. The owners there, it's a cash cow for them. They're not going to cut the tree down. Five, five branches already fell. You need to have your apartments on 95, your new businesses on 95. Government is atrocious. I take my son to school. I'm suggesting that everybody with a title have your cup of coffee in your chair and go out there in government over there on Honeysuckle, and then again, right down the street here from City Hall. Sit there for an hour between the hours of, say, 7:45 and 8:30, and see the line of traffic goes back two and a half blocks. It's crazy. You got to stop. When I came here about seven years ago and I bought in here from Court Lane, I bought up here, I could turn, there was no cars. Now it's out of control. So if you put the apartments on 95, you could have a bus line there, emergency status, the fire department, the paramedics can get there, the police can get there, because that's where most of their calls from. And Walmart is a criminal corporation. They can sue me if they can. They deal in child trafficking. They are urban FEMA camps, and I heard the sheriff a long time ago, even though him and I need to have a serious talk, and I mean a serious talk, they need to provide their own security. Use law enforcement? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Law enforcement does not need to go over there and do that. They need to go over there, hook them up and take them, not stand around and investigate stuff. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I really hope everyone paid attention.
Thank you, sir. Are there any, is there anyone else that would like to, to give any public comments this evening? Okay. Moving on to our next item on the agenda, we have a commission report. We're happy to have Ms. Lynn Frazon here tonight, who is the chairman of Hayden's Arts Commission. Give us an update on what's going on there. It's awfully nice to have you here tonight, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Lynn Frazon, Chair of the Hayden Arts Commission. Thank you, Mayor Frissell, and City Council for the opportunity to update you on our work for the Hayden Arts Commission. The Hayden Arts Commission consists, excuse me, consists of five commissioners, myself, Matthew Edwards, who is the vice chair, Terry Lee, Stephanie Satterfield, and DeVaughn Cummings. We meet the first Wednesday of each month at 3:00 PM, and we invite you as well as the public to attend. This Friday evening, the commission will be participating in Friday Night Frights at Hayden Elementary School, dressed up and passing out goodies to the kids and families of Hayden. The Hayden City Hall Art Gallery, which proudly displays local artists, is presently showing the art of Anita Poland through the month of January 2024. We continue to work on the Come Together Bench Program that will strategically be placing artistic benches in Hayden's downtown district, designed by local artists with a Hayden-centric theme. We are presently seeking artists to submit proposals for their designs. There's also an ongoing discussion going on about criteria for art in the present and future roundabouts within the city limits, as well as meetings with staff about easements and how to proceed with placement of art in front of many local businesses, such as the New Surgical Center on Government Way. We are also looking to forward for summer of 2024 to work with local theater groups to present programs for the youth. Lastly, the commission is very excited about the possibility of donating a live Christmas tree for the lobby of City Hall this year, along with a Christmas tree decoration project that will involve a collaboration with local schools, having schoolchildren designing and making their own decorations to decorate the tree in the lobby. We feel that this will bolster children wanting to visit City Hall during the holiday season to share their art with their families. We thank you for, I thank you for your time in allowing me to present this update to you this evening, and are there any questions or comments?
I just want to thank you and your commission for the time that you put in, and I know it's a service that you have a heart for, and I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. White.
Yes. Yeah, thank you for your service. I really appreciate it. I thought the chalk being given out at the Hayden Days Parade was a nice touch, too.
Thank you. It was very much enjoyable, and I did forget to mention that. Yes, we did walk in the parade and afterwards, and for Hayden Days, we had the kids do rock art, rock painting, and that was really fun. Thanks to Abby, who helps us and helps us kind of keep things going and tells us when we're getting off course. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for showing up tonight. We appreciate it. We appreciate your dedication to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda, unfinished business. First item is the Urban Renewal Agency recommendation to expand the existing Hayden Urban Renewal District. We have Ms. Cleveland, Ms. Bliss Cleveland, if you would, Aunt, I'd appreciate that.
Rhonda Mitchell, the chair of the...
Is Rhonda here? There she is.
Yeah, so back in May, I believe, and for several months before that, Hura was looking at if the boundary could be expanded, because there's criteria for that in state code. And if, if it could, where would those expansions maybe occur? And the, the real reason behind the expansion was that we'd met with, with city staff, and there were several projects, like infrastructure projects on their CIP that are in, partially in the district.
Could you explain CIP?
Yes, Capital Improvement Plan. Thank you. So there were a lot of projects that the city was really wanting Hura to consider participating in, but they weren't fully in the district. So we started to kind of look at those projects and maybe other parks properties, and we looked through, what I want to say is the Parks Master Plan and the Transportation Plan and the Sewer Plan, and started to look at what projects the city had on their horizon that were in the district and not. And just trying, the Hura district closes in 2029, so looking at if Hura was going to make, help make a difference in knocking some of these projects out, what would the priorities be? And so we'd kind of been working through that for a few months, and then we ran through some numbers just to make sure that if we were expanding, you can't go over, the state law requires that your area can't be more than 10% of the area of the city of Hayden, and your assessed value, the valuation of Hura can't be more than 10% of the overall valuation of the city. So we kind of checked those with some numbers that the county assessor gave us, and so dialing it into the areas that looked most attractive to Hura, we made a list, and what, what Hura was recommending to the city, because Hura cannot expand itself, was that the city takes some action and next steps in working through what it would take to expand the district. So our understanding is that the existing feasibility, eligibility study, not feasibility, the existing eligibility study is just the parcels that are included in Hura today. So even if you're one more parcel outside of that boundary, you have to make sure that that parcel is eligible. And so you have to amend the existing eligibility study to include parcels that you would maybe want to expand into. That doesn't mean that you have to expand into them. That would just give you the answer on are these areas eligible or not? And then my understanding, and Rhonda's here because she knows way more about it than I do, my understanding is then you would hold a public hearing to officially expand the district. And then Hayden, or Hura could partner with Hayden on some of these infrastructure projects. But we're kind of stuck because we can't help, we can't really fund outside of our district. So that's in a nutshell. Any other questions?
If I could paraphrase what you're saying, then, your, your rough look at potential expansion areas has shown eight or so areas to be eligible, but we don't know if they actually qualify to become part of the district or not.
Exactly. True. I wouldn't use the word eligible, because we didn't, we didn't go through any kind of an eligibility study. My understanding from the Hura attorney is that Hura cannot participate in that effort. We can't participate financially, and it's purely a city endeavor, because you created the initial district, so we can't expand ourselves. So what we did was look at if we would go beyond those 10% rules that are in state code. So it doesn't appear that you would, that we'd still fall below that 10% rule. And Rhonda's, Rhonda's here, but we looked at all sorts of other areas, too, and that kind of, we would go above 10%. So the board, the commissioners tailored it to the areas they thought would be most beneficial to expand into. We're not asking you to necessarily concur with those areas tonight. We're just asking that you take some actionable steps to look at expanding the district. So you would look, you would do that next step, which would be amending the eligibility study. The council could do other areas or pull areas out. This is just what the Hura board recommended.
So a question for our attorney. Rhonda, the, is, is what, what needed at this point is to first decide if we are even interested, excuse me, in expanding the Hura bound?
No, if you're even interested in determining whether or not the proposed parcels are eligible.
Okay. And?
Your expansion decision comes after a public hearing. So this is just trying, are you interested in determining whether or not the proposed parcels are even eligible to discuss for expansion?
And then if we are interested in entering into the discussion on whether they should be included or not, is our next step then to do a feasibility study?
That's what we're talking about, is if you would be taking action tonight to proceed with the eligibility study?
Eligibility study.
For these proposed parcels or any others that you've identified, but I don't know that council has discussed other parcels outside of what Hura has proposed.
I'll start off with Mr. Satterfield. Do you have any, any questions at this moment?
No, no, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Other members of council, questions or at this point?
I do, if no one else is going to go.
Mr. Roder, please.
And this is a question for legal. I think it's, I'm thinking about the process, and I would, I would like to see, is it, is it wrong to have a public hearing first to see what the people want?
So you don't know if these parcels are even eligible, but you need to know that first.
I know, but I don't want to spend the money, and then the people say no. That's my point, is, is to...
If you want to have a public hearing on whether or not to proceed with the eligibility study, that is perfectly in your purview.
Because I'd like to hear from the people what their thoughts are. I think that would be a good way to proceed, and that's my comment to Mayor, that, you know, people should have the ability to speak to this issue, not just a public meeting where they hear, but public hearing, which we can hear from you, you folks, and that would be my suggestion, if that's appropriate.
It is appropriate.
Other comments or questions? Yeah, Ms. White.
Yes. I'd like to ask one question. With the, in granting these requests for more property and the projects that you'd like to have done on these properties, will we be able to have a legal agreement with urban renewal that only those properties, only those projects would be done if the expansion is granted?
No, I don't believe that that would be appropriate. The board, the Hura board operates independently of council.
Thank you.
Other question, Mr. De Priest.
Sure. I'm looking at, we have seven of them, it looks like, that are being recommended. As we move into this eligibility study phase of it, is this the proper time when we have this discussion of do we want to enter into an eligibility stage of, stage of saying, yeah, we'd like to consider properties, whatever, AB, AB, GKN, or whatever it is, is this the time where we would say, possibly say, well, we're not interested in eligibility of this one or that one? Can we narrow it down to which ones we'd like to proceed with an eligibility study for?
Well, you and Council President Roder are kind of going different directions, so you could go either way. I mean, if you want to try to identify tonight and discuss moving forward with an eligibility study on certain parcels, you can, or if you want to proceed down the route of gaining public input on whether or not to even consider parcels at all, then we would talk about how do you want to gather that public input? A public hearing can be kind of sterile. Maybe you want to do it more in an open house sort of scenario, where it can be more of an interactive and educational process.
Well, that was kind of my question. I mean, if we were to determine specific properties we were interested in and then move to a public hearing, so that we only discussed, because we said, here they are, folks, you know, all of these, we could narrow it down to, because I think there's a lot of people who have issues about particular properties here, and if they were either on or off the table, that would be more of a, a specific factor of the, of the hearing instead of just a broad, we don't know what it's going to be, we want to comment, we do or don't like this, because when that property they don't like might not even be on the table. Do you understand? Do you understand what I'm trying to say?
Narrow down? I still think if you're, as a council, going to lean towards public comment, garner all of your public comment. And then at the, your decision point after the public input can be which parcels to proceed with an eligibility study on if and.
And one of the reasons that I made, are you done in?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that there's a concern about obviously congestion, traffic congestion in our city, which are these intersections. And I think it would be important to people who are able to say, yeah, I'd like to see this intersection, this intersection, and this intersection fixed. And part of the funding, because Hura's money comes from taxes and there's no other better way to use those taxes than to fix our intersections. So I think it would be helpful to get people's input on what intersections they would like fixed. That, that's where I'm going with either a open house or a public hearing on it.
No, it's kind of the point of what I was saying, you know, narrow it down to what we're talking about here.
I, I like the open house style because you can be more interactive with the public and you can all gain different information and then you can collaborate on what you've heard and it gives you an opportunity to educate as well.
So we're not limited to a hearing of, you have X number of times to say?
Right, which can be very sterile and difficult when you're looking at this type of decision.
Um, I think just, do you mind if I jump in?
Go ahead.
Okay. I think that in your survey that you did just a few months ago, you did ask the public for the intersections that they were most interested in, looking at improving. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Honeysuckle and Government Way was on there, which is one of the areas that we're looking to expand into. Wyoming and Government Way was there, which is another one that we're looking to expand into, which was 1F. And then Miles, which, in Government Way, which is 1E. So I mean, clearly like the, one of the drivers, but well, I would say the main driver, but, but behind wanting to expand is to look at partnering with the city on some of this infrastructure. So if you do a public, I'm fine with a public process, but that's the reason behind it. Otherwise, there wouldn't, this request wouldn't be in front of you. I mean, would you agree? I mean, Rhonda can come up here and correct me if I'm wrong, but, you know, they're really minor adjustments in the, in most cases to make sure that the full intersection is in the district or something like that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Satterfield?
Uh, yeah. You know, I, I think we should move ahead with a feasibility study because we need to, I, I'm in agreement of having a public discussion on it, but I think we need to identify the properties that would be in that new expansion, but also what could be done with those properties. For instance, down on the, and you know, all know that I'm a big proponent of this, there's the 10 acres on Miles and Maple, okay? Do we want to see 30 or 40 houses there? Or do we want to see a park or something like that? And, and I think it'd be more prudent to identify the properties and then have the public meeting. Urban renewal is a very complex, complicated thing, and we need to educate the people on how it actually works. Because I listened to public comment tonight and respectfully, these folks don't understand how Hura works. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. White?
Yes, first of all, with this eligibility study, we don't know how much it will cost, how long it will take, who will do it. And I don't see on this list what projects are being asked for. I see intersections and property that are asked for, but I don't see projects. And again, without a, a legal agreement about what projects they would be doing, it seems like we're moving into an unknown situation. So we might have as a council, one idea, yes, we want this intersection fixed, but on the other hand, do we have that agreement? And we, again, we aren't able to have that. So, and then I don't think that buying a piece of property for a park to keep it from being a housing project is a legitimate reason to buy a park. I think if we are gonna buy a park, we have other parks that need fixing. We have Stoddard Park Barn that needs fixing. And so to buy a piece of 10 acres just so it won't become a housing development, I mean, what about Hayden families that want to bring their kids here? I mean, what if that needs to be homes? Then I think we need to think seriously about what our goals are. And then with, with only a little bit of time left in the urban renewal district, I think we're going backwards by expanding them. I think we need to, I believe we need to talk about how to finish it, how to taper it down and end it at this time, not give them six more properties and say, you know, go for it. So that's, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, I hear, Mr. De Priest, go ahead.
How do I say this? As I look at the CIP and the projects listed on the five-year plan, these intersections are in that plan if I'm not mistaken. And they aren't gonna happen if we don't get assistance from Hura on them unless we float bonds or raise taxes. And the speaker's already here, the gentleman, I don't, in the back, and he's right. You know, a lot of times a day, a lot of these intersections that he mentioned and that are in this are backed up and they aren't gonna get any better unless we get on them and start doing something. And at this point in time, if we don't take advantage of the opportunity to have the assistance to get them done, we're gonna be years down the road and it isn't gonna, people aren't gonna move away. Let's just put it that way.
Mr. Roder?
Thank you, Mayor. Something that Melissa said, that the survey identified that it's important for the citizens of Hayden to have these intersections working to the point where we can reduce the congestion as much as possible. I think what, that's true, but the question wasn't in the survey, do you want urban renewal to pay for it? And, and I want to make this, this point with it because a, doing a, an open house to explain a little bit more that if, if urban renewal, and we have probably $5 million in the bank right now to do projects.
Urban renewal does, not us.
Urban renewal, yeah. I'm on that board, so that's why I say we. If we don't use that money to do the improvements on these intersections, my question is, where do we get the money? Okay? Well, Ed mentioned it. Well, then we would have to go out to the public and say, do you want to raise your taxes? And in this climate, what are people do you think are gonna say? Probably no. I'm assuming that. I mean, maybe people do want their taxes to go up, but I sure don't like to see that. I mean, so my point again is, we have a, a way to work through the problem and that is using these urban renewal dollars in to fix these intersections. We can't fix everything right away, but we have a, we do have time through the 2029 to do the best job we can with that, with that tax money. That is tax money being collected by the urban renewal. It's an appointed board. That's why I like being on the board, because I'm voted in and I do my best watching when I can for the taxpayer. So that's why we have a choice. Do you want to raise your taxes or do you want to use that urban renewal money that is tax money? And that's why I would like to have a, an open house to say, tell people, let them know that's your choice. What intersections would you like worked on?
Mr. De Priest?
Yeah, um, kind of we're tagging on along and stuff like that. And it was, it was brought up earlier tonight when this discussion, and I've heard this several times, there's what I call a misnomer, misunderstanding, and it is complex and people keep talking about it. And I've had conversations with people where you're just going, no, 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 that's not, that's not how it works. That there's a misnomer that if Hura, that all the money that Hura is collecting would go to Hayden. It wouldn't. About 12% of it would go to Hayden. There are several other taxing entities that it would be distributed amongst. It's not like the 5 million, uh, uh, Councilmember Roder just talked about they have. If you were dissolve Hura right now, we'd get 12% of that, $600,000, and that wouldn't fund one of these projects that, that we're talking about over the next five years. So that's, that's part of, people just think there's this gigantic pool of money that's being taken from the Hayden taxpayers and kept from the Hayden taxpayers. We get 12% of it. And, and it's, it's pooling of resources that is helping us hopefully do these projects that we otherwise wouldn't have, or we would have to raise your taxes significantly to do these projects.
Members of council, refocusing now on, go ahead, Ms. White, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I had one more comment to make. So the eligibility study, it says it's going to be looking at deteriorated areas. And I don't see Hayden as being a slum or a ghetto. And deteriorated could be slum or buildings that need improvement. It also goes even more general to where any area which by reason of the presence of a substantial number of deteriorated or deteriorating structures. So if you have a, a little shed falling down on your property, does that mean you're deteriorated? Predominance of defective or inadequate street layout, faulty lot layout in relation to size, adequacy, accessibility or usefulness. And then it even goes on to say, uh, social liability that's a menace to the public health, safety, morals, or welfare in its present condition and use. And I mean, I feel like this is making Hayden an HOA, a homeowners association, someone who's coming in and telling you what your property needs to look at, look like, how you manage your property. If your grass isn't cut right or you have a, a shed falling down in your yard and you don't fix it, then you're gonna go in the urban renewal district? And I think that Hayden is nowhere near needing an urban renewal district dictating how people who own a piece of property run it. And I, I mean, are we gonna change the name of the Hura district to the Hayden Homeowners Association? Really? I'm opposed to expanding the district at this time. Thank you.
Mr. De Priest?
Mr. Mayor?
I will try.
Excuse me for just a moment. I'll let Mr. Satterfield go here.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Satterfield, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, in my mind, having lived here for 62 years, Hura's doing their job, they're doing an excellent job. And if you look at the things they've done, they put in sewer, they, they've helped with Croft Park, with City Hall. The reason we don't see blight is because the old car wash is gone, Capones is where the old gas station used to be, Spaniardos is being developed. That's, that's only part of what urban renewal does. And in my mind, the reason we're not seeing blight is because they've been doing a darn good job. Thank you, Mayor.
And Mr. Priest, before you start, before you start, what we're, where we're, I'm trying to refocus here is the next steps we're about to take, not the pros and cons of urban renewal agency at this point.
There's, again, it gets to complexity here. Criteria for deteriorated area eligibility is stated in Idaho Code 50-2903, and there are eight. And of deteriorated areas, Councilmember White just read one. There are six, okay? So it doesn't mean that in any particular case, it's gonna be fit under, under what Councilmember White just read. One, if you look at C, it says any area which is predominantly open and which because of obsolete plating, diversity of ownership, deterioration of structures or improvements, or otherwise results in economic underdevelopment of the area, or substantially impairs or arrests the sound growth of the municipality. But again, that's just another one of six.
Mr. Priest?
Okay.
I understand.
It's much more complex than, you know, the sound bites are what I think confuse a lot of people because they hear the one sound bite and they don't hear the other five. And so they think, well, he said this.
So council, at this point, I would like us to focus on which direction to move forward regarding the eligible or potentially eligible property. I heard, I've heard a, a suggestion from Mr. Satterfield that we proceed with a eligibility study, feasibility study, if you will.
Eligibility.
Sorry?
Eligibility.
Eligibility study, thank you very much. Okay, I will scratch that here. Ms. White is suggesting we, we go nowhere with the expansion of the urban renewal agency. Mr. Roder is interested in having a, some type of a public meeting, perhaps an open house to, as our next step. And I would appreciate a motion at this point to start the ball moving as to our next step.
I'll take a stab at that.
Mr. Roder?
Because there's a lot of thoughts being tossed around here. I think when you look at all the definitions of deteriorated areas, I think that since most of these areas that we're considering are right next to our existing urban renewal agency. In fact, you can't just put an island of an urban renewal addition, it has to be contiguous. And so I, my, my point is this, I believe that what's being considered probably will be approved by the eligibility study. So I, I, I don't want to spend the money on that right now. I would prefer, so my motion would be that we first have an open house explaining in, to the folks, you know, do you want your taxes to pay for this or do you want urban renewal money that's already been collected via tax to fix these specific intersections that people want? And then, you know, to do the, the legal process, meaning we do have to do an eligibility study to follow the law to make sure, I'm okay with that, but I would like that sequence. I, I want to hear from the people what they have to say.
So your motion, sir, would be?
My motion is that we have an open house first about the, the consideration of these expansion possibilities and get input from the people what they would like. And then after that, go to an eligibility study.
Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second the discussion.
We have a motion and a second on that. Do we have further discussion, council? Mr. De Priest?
I mean, I, I agree with that. I, I think the open house, and then it's gonna, it's gonna come back to what I talked about earlier. At that open house, do we want to say, here they are, all of them, and take input from the people and they'll say, okay, yeah, we, there's a lot of, there's seven different ones that we're gonna have to have the ability to educate. Someone say, well, what about this one? Well, we need to understand what that one is about. And, and like, or do we want to, at this point in time, narrow the open house as to which properties we want to discuss?
So I agree that we narrow down, but I don't know if that's, at this point in the motion, should we do that? That could be amended if you want to amend it and, and to pick what ones, but I'm open to that idea.
Right. I think that could be a dis-
So Mr. Roder, would you care to amend your motion?
I would amend the motion to narrow down the selection that would be considered at an open house based on the recommendations of Hura.
And do we have a second to that?
Well, I would withdraw my second to the first and second that. I guess.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Roder, the, the concern that I have with your, with your idea, I get the concept, but you want to, you want to cut, potentially cut certain areas out before we even go to the public to get their input on an open house? I would just suggest to council, before you vote on this, that we go to the public for an open house with all of the potentially eligible properties and hear from the public about how they would like to have this list shaved or not. So, but we still need to, we need to vote on this, so we need to vote this up or down before we go further. Okay, Ms. White?
Is there a discussion now?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to know if we had an open house, who would be in charge of determining what properties would be presented and what questions would be asked?
I can clarify that. I'd like to withdraw my motion. My motion would include all the properties, and if we'd be considered on this list, I think that would then take care of that.
And I may address your questions, too.
But who would, who would be in charge of
Just gonna answer the question.
establishing the parameters of, of, like, okay, we have a, on the urban renewal proposal, there's just intersections, corners of properties. So who's going to put out what is going to be done with each piece of property in our
I don't believe in, in. Oh.
Good timing.
Uh-oh. Mr. Satterfield, could that possibly be your phone?
No.
No? Somebody's phone.
I don't think so.
I think it's a-
Man, if you could shut that phone off, that would be great. There we go.
There you go, whatever.
That's good. Thank you very much.
Mayor, do I have to restate my motion?
Why don't you withdraw your?
I, I did, I withdraw my, my, let's start over. Let's see, short-term memory goes first, right?
I'll withdraw my second. Let's start over.
Okay, so here we go.
You have a new motion, Mr. Roder.
Okay, here we go. Um, my motion is that we, we have an open house that would include all these, uh, recommended
Seven.
properties to be included, added to the existing urban renewal district, also known as the revenue allocation area, getting technical about it. And, and, um, and, and, um-
Just get public input.
Pardon?
And get public input.
We'll get imp, pub, public input on all of those properties, so people can have their say. And, uh, after that process, then to see those selected properties that we come up with, if it gets narrowed down, um, then we would have a eligibility study done to determine the eligibility of those selected properties.
Do we have a second on that? We have a motion and a second. Ms. White?
Okay.
Discussion?
Discussion. So, the end game, though, even after we get public input and we do an eligibility study, we still don't have a contract that those things that the people have intended to be done will be done. We have no promise. Once we give those properties into the urban renewal district and they become their taxing district, or into their, um, district, we have no control. So that is my concern.
Mr. De Priest?
Want to be based on what's on the five-year CIP? Aren't those the projects that we're, we're looking at? And isn't the CIP, uh, basically the, the, not the directive, but the guide for what will happen? It's already in the works if I'm not, I don't have a CIP in front of me, but there's already a, a, a progression of events for each of these, these properties, uh, related to this, if I'm not mistaken? Can somebody correct me or, or if I, if I'm missing?
I don't know if the, if I can talk in the middle of a motion.
I, I can help.
Okay.
Let's go back to a more simple example. Do you remember when you approved the installation of the elevator? And at that, at that meeting, you said, can we go to Hura and see if they can help us with funding for this, if it meets the Hura requirements for additional funding? And they responded right back and said, absolutely, we can do that. That is the process. And they said, and here's how much we can give you. You have projects on your CIP that make them eligible for assistance. You're going to identify through Public Works and Transportation projects that are project-ready that you can then go request funding from Hura for. If they're in the district, correct?
They're in the district.
Assuming they're in the district.
To paraphrase Ms. Jovic, I, I believe that if what we're saying here is that we need to have the properties first before we can decide, we need to have the properties included in the district before we can decide what to do with them.
Before you can make a request of Hura to assist funding a project that is located partially or all on those properties.
Yes. Other, other discussion, Mr. Roder?
Just wanna ask, uh, Councilmember White, is your concern that we would listen to the people and they said, we want these intersections done? And Hura said, looks, says we have the money? And is your concern that we, that Hura would take that money and go elsewhere?
I'm concerned that without a promise, we, we do not have a guarantee of what will be done. Also, we do not have, uh, assurances. And also, right now on this list, there is no, uh, project listed. It's only intersections and properties. So without knowing what is going to be done, why they've asked for these certain properties, I'm hesitant.
Do we have a CIP somewhere around here?
Let's, let's not go there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have, we have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes. Motion passes. I'd like to ask staff, please, to, uh, at the earliest convenience, come up with, uh, some opportunities for an open house for, uh, for Hura. Thank you. Our next item, item 5B, is the revised Cootney County Agreement to Provide Law Enforcement Services. And because I am also now the acting city administrator, um, that falls under me. Ladies and gentlemen of council, um, after the, uh, you all, I may, uh, remind you that about two meetings ago, you all approved a contract for law enforcement services on the condition that we establish a public safety commission. Um, when we went to the sheriff with that, the sheriff had some concerns, and the sheriff's biggest concern is that with the 10 deputies that they are providing to us, we cannot physically fill all of the shifts seven days a week. That's the day, the night, and the graveyard. The sheriff suggested that instead that he fill our graveyard shift with, uh, regional deputies that would not be in the city of Hayden, but if they were, if we had a call, that they would come to the city of Hayden. Um, that didn't work so well with us. So in the end, the sheriff has agreed to provide us with 10 deputies, and that works out to two deputies per shift in Hayden on the day shift and the night shift. And he will provide one dedicated deputy to Hayden on the graveyard shift, and that's seven days a week. The previous contract that you had is being modi, has been modified in the yellow that you see here to provide exactly, I believe, what we just said. Um, does council have questions or comments regarding that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am, Ms. White?
Yes. I would like to know the, the hours that are considered graveyard.
Uh, um,
Our graveyard shift starts at 8:00 and ends at 6:00.
Okay. Thank you very much.
8:00 PM to 6:00 AM.
Okay. Thank you.
8:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Thank you. Um, Mr. Roder?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and this is a question I'm gonna ask legal. Contracts, um, sometimes seem clear and sometimes not so clear. And that's why I'm gonna ask legal counsel to take a look at my question. And, um, I'm gonna go by, uh, off our city website, uh, where we have a question and answer, and it's still on our website. It's the law enforcement base budget increase frequently asked questions. And, and the question is, what is the base budget increase? The response to the voters, because this is what went out before the vote on the base budget increase, said the cost to fund six additional assigned deputies in the amount of $543,843 is an estimated increase of 29.5% to the, to the, only the city's property tax portion of the property's tax bill. And I was coming from your taxes. Um, so we're telling the public, based on what we understand our agreement is with the sheriff at that point in time, what he will provide, um, that we would, this addition of that $500,000 would bring us up to $1,700, $77,000, and we would get six additional assigned deputies. So that went out to the public on our, on our question and answer. Then the actual ballot, um, base bu, budget increase for law enforcement said, uh, specifically, the funds will be used to pay for the cost of six officers assigned to the city. So my question is this, based on the ballot and what we've told the voting public about what they would receive being taxed on their property, does this contract meet those?
Yes, the contract says the services provided shall include routine motor patrols during daytime and nighttime hours using 10 full-time deputies specifically assigned to Hayden. One of the 10 deputies will be a school resource officer. That was also in the FAQ sheet, that one would be a school resource officer. The remainder of the paragraph and the highlighted section is just trying to articulate how those deputies are going to cover those shifts.
But.
But it says 10.
But are those 10 going to be based here in Hayden? Or would they be coming from other quadrants? I understand there's four quadrants.
Assigned to Hayden. They are Hayden deputies.
Okay, and then do we actually get 10 when a resource officer spends nine months out of the year at the schools and not as a deputy? Because we're only having them three months out of the year, so isn't that?
You get them three months out of the year, and you get them, um, during school vacation, when school is out during the year, like Christmas vacation and spring vacation, they, they work for the city of Hayden during those periods. But the, the, the one SRO which is, if I'm not mistaken, also partially-
The SRO is school resource officer.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I know what it is, but it is, is it partially paid by the school district?
Uh, yes, it is.
So it, it's not a, it's not fully paid by the city of Hayden anyways. And that SRO position was contemplated through the fact sheet, the negotiations at the time of the base budget levy override, as well as the information provided to the public. So this contract meets what, the information that was presented to the public in the base budget levy override information.
Thank you for your answer. I have one other point that I'd like to bring up.
Yes, sir.
Okay, last council meeting, we had a five-year plan on law enforcement funding. Um, we approved that. Now, in the first year, it says new deputy count begins October 1, 2023, begin tracking hours, response, crimes, et cetera. Um, I made the motion that we do the tracking through a third party. And my question is, does a contract allow us to do the third-party tracking of hours that these deputies are in the city of Hayden? And what I, what I asked for is that there's a service through Verizon Connect, and they do this for many law enforcement agencies, is we can put a, have a boundary, a digital boundary put around our city limits, and every time the, a deputy is in the boundary, it's accounted for for time. My concern is, um, accountability. And, you know, we gotta, I trust, but we need to verify what we're paying that $1,77,000 for. Are we going to get the hours? And, and it's like why we have accountants that verify and audits our financials. I'm looking for a third party just to track the hours. We don't need to know where they are at a specific time. I just wanna know on a regular basis, and they can do this monthly, it's free equipment for 10 deputy vehicles, and it's about $2,000 a year for 10, 10 of those vehicles to be tracked. So for $2,000, we can have that done.
Mr. Roder, I, I believe that in a previous council meeting, you, uh, you made that motion and it was voted down by council.
So, but I'm still asking whether that's in the contract or not, and the answer is not.
Third-party tracking is not. What is in the contract is the county shall provide to the city monthly reports no later than the 30th day of the following month. These reports shall identify statistics showing the shift coverage by officer and the hours used, and crime and citation activity for the quarter, and any other statistics that are helpful to understanding the law enforcement services provided by the county for that period, just for the public, so they know exactly what paragraph is in the contract. And that is not third-party tracking. You are correct.
That's, that's the point I wanna make. Thank you.
Mr. De Priest?
Thank you. Um, deputy, what is the, the day shift hours?
It shifts zero, 6:00 to 0:00, or 4:00, 4:00 PM. So 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
6:00 AM to 4:00. And what is the swing or night shift, whatever that is?
Swing shift is 3:00 PM to 1:00 in the morning.
So there's overlap?
There is a-
In these, yeah. Okay, so I wanted to make sure, cause of the, the two deputy coverage thing. Okay, that, thank you much.
Mr. Satterfield, do you have any questions or comments, sir?
Uh, no. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Is there any, Ms. White?
Yes, thank you. I was just wondering, the tracking, does it have the possibility of going the other way? And would the sheriff's department charge us for hours over coming? You know, like if they find that they have officers coming from outside of Hayden coming in? Would they charge us extra if it went over? That, I'm just wondering about that.
That's a good question. They may in future contracts, not in this contract. In this contract, uh, when they spend more than that, those 10 deputies' times in Hayden, we will incur no additional charge under this contract. It's good for one year. Mr. Roder?
Yeah, two more points I'd like to make. One is that we are talking about maybe moving forward. We are looking at maybe moving forward with a public safety committee looking into, uh, our own police department. Having that data from a third party would also help aid us in planning, what do we need for the future? And since we have a five-year plan that we approved, having data that we can use for this five, for a five-year plan that our sheriff wants, um, I think is critical in having data and making future decisions.
Okay, regrouping here and moving towards a decision, I would appreciate a motion from council on whether or not to approve the revised Cootney County Law Enforcement Agreement.
My move that we approve the revised contract to the-
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Does anyone have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Abby.
Council President Roder?
No.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Councilmember White?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business, the Hayden Bible Fellowship request to lease or purchase city property. For those folks in the audience that may not be aware, uh, immediately north of the Hayden Elementary is a parcel of land that the city owns. Uh, it's kind of between the saw shop and the church. And, uh, the, um, the, uh, the, uh, what's the name of the church?
Hayden Bible Fellowship.
Hayden Bible Fellowship. Is interested in purchasing or leasing that property. Satterfield, do you have the information on that?
I, I do. Um, Mayor, the, the, uh, Hayden Bible Fellowship's, um, sent a letter to the city requesting consideration to allow them to purchase the properties directly north of them that the city owns. Um, that was brought to the, um, city's committee that we have that deals with property infrastructure. And at that meeting, there, there was a lot of discussion on, on what the best use of that land might actually be. And I think that the, the recommendation that was brought, sent to you in a memo, um, was that the committee was not interested in actually selling that to them. They think there may be a higher, better use. However, there was some interest in the possibility of leasing it to them, um, that would bring in revenue, uh, because it's not fully utilized at this point. And so that's what, um, was brought forth, and so we kinda need to-
forth. And so we kind of need to, I think the thought is to provide them an answer from the council on, on what their interests are.
It appears from your memo, Mr. Satterling, that you have four conditions that the Facilities Committee recommended go along with the, with the short-term lease on this.
Yeah, I could read those for you, for the public. That the property only be used for parking, that the city shall be allowed to use the property for special events. We, we use that property for our parades and some other events to stage vehicles. Require Hayden Bible Fellowship to submit a long-term solution for parking requirements and reduce access points to government way. The, the point there is that they, they're probably going to have ongoing needs for this, and if they're, if we're not going to sell the property, they may need to solve their, their issue, or at least be looking at a solution. And then allow public parking on the property Monday through Saturday, so that it could be used for other businesses during the time that they're not, they don't have their heavy use.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from council?
Yes, I was just, okay.
You know, you talk more when you're closer to us.
I like it when Rogers here too, though. So I was, okay, so for a church to use this property as a parking lot, it probably would be paving, rather than, is it a dirt lot right now, or?
No, there is, there is pavement on the property.
Okay, it is paved. So have we discussed how much either a rent would be, or how much a purchase price would be on this property?
So I think we need to pause for one moment, only because I haven't seen this before tonight, but these restrictions that we would be holding back for ourselves, these conditions, make this look more like a license to use on Sundays rather than a lease agreement. So I, Councilwoman White, you are perfectly on track with trying to identify a value for allowing that to happen, but it doesn't look like a lease term, just to be clear.
There was, there was discussion based on what we had leased it prior, but there wasn't all these conditions. So that is, our legal counsel is correct on that sense. So there has been no discussion on what that might look like as far as a lease or license to use, as she put it. We did not discuss a value to sell because the committees was not really thinking that was the best use of the property in the downtown area. So.
So, Ms. Jovick, the, now that you have had a chance to glance at this, albeit for five minutes, do you feel that this is an opportunity that council should pursue to allow use of the property, whether it be a lease or whatever document?
I, I don't have any concern with council proceeding with some relationship with the church for the use of this property. I just wanted to be really clear what that, that agreement would look like if you proceed. It's not going to be a lease with these conditions.
Okay.
So permissive use, license to use, it's, it's going to be a license to use for set period of time.
Would anyone on council care to make a motion having staff pursue the type of agreement that would be appropriate in this case?
I was wondering if the pastor of the church is here, if he had anything to say to us.
Is the pastor of, of the church here?
No.
Okay.
Mr. De Priest.
Yeah, that's kind of where I was going. I think, you know, we should, it appears as though we need to identify exactly what type of use and what type of documentation or agreement that we're going to be looking at entering in. And I would, I would motion or move that the staff determine that, prepare that, and bring it before council when completed.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Oh, I'll second it, yeah, but I have a question for discussion.
First of all, we have a second. Now we have discussion. Mr. Roder.
Yeah. My question is, is, is this, in asking the staff to prepare something, are we looking at a purchase or a lease, or just a lease?
Just a license. It wouldn't even be a lease.
But, okay, let's say a license or a purchase. I think we need to delineate the two. Which, which is it?
Is there any desire, I mean, to purchase, I guess, do we, I, are we looking, are we looking at, at, and do we even make that decision right now? Because it sounds like you said the committee-
Well, your committee, your facilities planning committee recommends against selling the property.
Right. Right, so we're looking at coming up with the license, as you say then.
Will we need to amend the motion to consider only a, a license agreement?
I think the motion was clear enough for that.
Okay, the motion was clear enough. And we have a second. Do we have further discussion? Ms. White.
I don't know if this would mean amending the motion or not, but I, I would like to, the church to have permission to use it on Sundays.
That's what the license agreement would be.
The license agreement is all right.
Yeah, okay. And, and maybe other days for other events notice.
Mr. Satterfield, go ahead.
If, if we were to sell this property, I think we should have it appraised, and then we should put it out to bid, because I have two or three people who are very interested in purchasing that property. So I have no problem with the lease, but if we were to sell it, I think it should be done in a manner that we get the most bang for our buck, which means put it out to bid after we have an appraisal done. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Our, our motion at this point is a license agreement for them to use it on Sundays. Do we have further discussion on that from council?
Is that just Sundays?
I think you're going to want to include any other special events that they have where they provide a certain amount of notice to council or to the city.
Based on the motion, maybe we can leave that up to staff.
I don't remember exactly what the motion is. Abby's going to have to read it back.
I would have to listen to the audio again.
Okay. Ed, do you remember exactly what your motion was?
For staff to proceed with developing a, a licensing agreement with the church.
What I thought.
That's what I heard. And, and, and just the, I don't want to amend it, just with the knowledge that the staff would come up with those licensing agreement conditions.
We'll bring it back with the terms.
Okay, I'll come back. Yeah, thank you. With no more discussion. Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is creating a public safety commission. Two meetings ago, I believe, maybe it was one meeting ago, it was one meeting ago, the city council directed staff to begin the process of creating a public safety commission. Public Safety Commission, back to Mr. Roder's point earlier, would not be strictly for police. It would also involve fire, it would involve EMS, it involves areas of public safety. However, I certainly concede that the primary purpose at this point would be for, for public safety. A committee, council members, does not require an ordinance. However, a standing commission does require an ordinance from council to enact. And that is what is on the page here for you to look at. It is not our intention tonight to have council come to a final decision about this unless you wish to. But if council has some concerns about what's written, we would be happy to have staff take a second look at it, incorporate changes, and then come back at a later date. That's the purpose of our discussion tonight. Ms. White.
I don't see it as an action item.
Um.
So we can't vote on it tonight?
It, would it be an action item?
No, it's not listed as an action item.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. All right. So, so we will not vote on it tonight, but does council have anything they would like to see changed in this ordinance? Hearing none. Ms. White.
Yes. Thank you for that clarification. I, I need to look at it again to look for changes. I wasn't clear on the goals of the, of looking at this tonight.
Okay, if, if council does have any additional items that they come up with here, if you could please get it to staff within, say, within the week, to give them a chance to, to make any revisions that you'd like to see. And we will bring it back to council for, for ordinance approval. All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions about that? Okay. Item 6C, the joint funding agreement to construct the Hayden North Subregional Lift Station completion term extension request. Mr. Satterling, is that you?
Well, it kind of is. I think-
I'm sorry, Ms. Donna Phillips?
Donna helped me with it quite a bit. I had a lot of support. How's that?
Like a lot.
A number, a number of years ago, we had in, the city had entered into an agreement with Hayden North. They're building a, a subregional lift station. Along with that, not all the, not, the, the station is oversized to provide services outside of their, their boundary. And with that, the city council had agreed to the agreement basically that's in front of you. They've had a number of setbacks that have not allowed them to complete that at this point, and therefore, the agreement is coming-
At the end of December.
At the end of December. So we were looking at, they, they would like some, some ability to extend that. They're working diligently to try to get it done. It's a big expense for them, and it does provide other, does provide a benefit to the city above and beyond their, their boundary.
Well, and I think it's important to note that one of their biggest setbacks was the engineer of record, Rob Tate, passed away suddenly, and that has caused a number of delays for them in catching up. And it's, it's noted at, in the whereas is in the extension. And I think that it's important to make that of record, that that, that is one of the issues.
So the only change in this is the extension of time?
That's correct. From the expiration December of 2023 to June of 2024, June 30th, 2024.
Questions or comments from council? Mr. Roder.
Yeah, if, if we don't approve this, there would be quite an expense for them to then go through a re, reapplication process and start kind of over. So it could be very costly.
Yes.
And, and there may be cost increases.
It would subject us to a, a potential renegotiation of cost increases. So we want to keep this contract in place.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, I would, I would entertain a motion to, to approve or not the joint funding agreement?
Just the extension of the joint funding.
Thank you very much. The extension of the joint funding agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Roder, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we do an extension to the joint funding agreement to construct, to construction Hayden North Subregional Lift Station completion term extension request. I think I-
Do we have a second? Second? We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
And Council President Roder?
Yes. Motion passes. Last action item we have is to notify the public that during the week of October 12th to 16th, the city council was involved in an email exchange regarding constitutional sheriff. Those emails ended up going to all council members and may have possibly been considered a serial meeting.
Which is a potential open meeting law violation.
Thank you very much. Which is a potential open meeting law violation. Simply to notify the public of that.
It's not an action-
I'm sorry?
It's not an action item as listed.
True. Thank you very much. It's not an action item. Our number seven, reports? Yes, sir. Mr. Roder.
I guess I'm guilty. Because I don't know what a constitutional sheriff is. I know that, that they're sworn to take an oath to defend the U.S. and state constitution. And I had asked Sandy, because she brought it up in a meeting, what that means. And I'm just curious if you would like to let me know, what is a constitutional sheriff?
Well, yes, I hesitated to respond to the email because it went to everybody, and I was working on a, a response, which I have posted on my Sandy for Hayden webpage and Facebook page.
So I haven't read it. What, what is a constitutional sheriff?
Well, it's a sheriff who believes in the, the constitution and supports our, our constitutional rights. And I don't have it in front of me right now to, to read my response, but, so, yeah, I'm, I'm not prepared to answer your question. It's most-
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. De Priest?
Yeah, I, I'm kind of guilty, I think, of all this. We all got into this, what's a meeting, was it quasi-judicial, like, whatever? The question was asked, and, you know, I, I looked at it and did a little bit of research and stuff like that. And, and the gist of it, and this is just my own interpretation of what I read, is that the constitutional sheriff, and there's a Constitutional Sheriff Association or something like that, selects what laws he or she will in fact enforce, based on his or her interpretation of whether they are constitutional or not.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, this is not part of curing the open meeting law violation.
I agree, Ms. White.
And I am not, I was not prepared tonight with the answer for this question.
I agree. It is, it is not an, it is, it is not an item open for discussion on our calendar tonight. Moving on to reports. City Administrator Report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Satterfield.
Excuse me, I'm going to get off now because I'm going to have a coffee and fit.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, if I can find my papers here. For council information, first of all, the Hanson Property Appraisal is proceeding. We, we commissioned a, an MAI, that's a Master Appraiser Institute, appraiser to, to do that. And we will have that information by the middle of November. Also, the City Hall Elevator Project, we anticipate that the elevator will be delivered to City Hall within two weeks.
Oh, thank goodness.
How long it takes to put it up? But it will be here in two weeks. We can all stand in and say, oh, I know, this should go up and down something. We have a City Hall Generator update. In the process of having an electrical engineer determine the size of the generator needed for City Hall, we're going to see if the generator currently that the city owns is of adequate size to power City Hall. I just wanted to keep folks updated on that information. And Recreation and Community Events, Friday Night Frights, coming up this October 27th, 6 o'clock to 7:30. It will be at Hayden Meadows Elementary. We will also have a Veterans Day Ceremony on Saturday, November 11th, at 11:00 in the morning, something that, that our city does every year. In Finance, our budget booklets that council has all received are completed for FY24, and every member of council has been provided one to keep. The public can access the budget book on our website, under the Finance tab, if you have any information or any questions about it. And certainly, if you have further questions. Natasha Lang, if you'd raise your hand, our city finance director would be happy to discuss any of those extra questions that you may have. Do we have anything from, from council? Roundtable items? Ms. White.
Yes. I just wanted to bring up something that was on social media. I just, I know that we approved of the, the updated zone map on August 22nd of this year. And this is certified. But there's a map going around on Facebook and next door that looks kind of like it, but it's different. And the legend on the bottom says, this is to certif, this is to verify that this official future land use map by Resolution 2023-05, approved by the city council on August 22nd, 2023, supersedes and replaces the official future land use map adopted on December 14. And it ends there with that partial date- And it ends there with that partial date with no verification, no notarization, no mayoral signature. I was just wondering, uh, what's the providence of this map? Where does it come from?
I can answer that. Mr. DePree?
Yeah. On August 8th, at our workshop, I, I scribbled up there a map. And I believe, uh, staff, uh, cleaned it up. And, and it was my proposal of, as we are moving through the workshops of dealing with the comprehensive plan of future land use map. So what that is, is a cleaned up version of my crayon up there. And you're probably right, it was overlooked. But where you're seeing it on social media is it is, it is, it is noted that this is just a proposal relating to the workshops. Now, you're, you're probably right, that needs to, whether it was omitted or not and overlooked, needs to be dealt with. But it is indicated on the social media, so it's that it is just a proposal that will be discussed in workshops.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, yeah, that, that needs to be repaired because people online don't understand that things need to be notarized, signed, and certified. And it says it is certified, it's passed. And, I mean, if it, even if it wasn't, if it was cleaned up, that is, the, the wording on it is very wrong. And, yeah, so I would just like to see that. There's no heading on it saying Ed DePree's proposal on the top. So, and I've never seen anything like this.
I believe that it does, that most of the postings, that the people who, who did put those on there did say it is a proposal from Ed DePree at the, at the workshop.
Right. My concern is this was never given to council members in a packet of any kind. This is being.
It was up on the board. That was, it, it cleaned up version of what I drew on the board on August 8th.
Yeah, I had to search that out. It was all, yes, just.
Think it's possible that something on social media might not be accurate?
I just wanted to point that out for the people. That it is not certified.
All fact.
This is not certified. Thank you.
Sure. Do we have other items for, uh, for council roundtable? Mr. DePree?
Sure, I have three different things. You know, the idea came to me as I was walking in here the other day and that, about this discussion about the, the billboard and, and for transparency and to make agendas available. We have a, a plastic box right out there that has, I'm not sure what the paperwork is in there. Abby, do you know what that is? It's in that plastic box outside?
You know, that's our payment drop box.
It was a plastic box where you can take and, and put in.
It was.
Documents.
Yeah.
I think it has something that says something about the due date, the bills or when the pickups are.
It's an inform, yeah, it's an informational box. So I, could we put in a second informational box where we put the, the agendas in there? Because that seems to be the issue, the ability of people to, uh, see the agendas when we're not here. And if we could put a box just like that, I'd like to, I don't know if we have to approve it or go through the process, but I'd recommend that maybe we pursue that. Put a, put a little waterproof box like the one that's currently there that we put the agendas in so that if people do want to come down to city hall on a Friday night or Saturday, Sunday, or whatever, that they have access to an agenda for, so they can see what's going on. Secondly, uh, we, we talked about this a lot and I, I try to thank staff over and over and over because they do such a great job and they are overloaded and, and the like and, and running on a very thin, uh, skeleton-ish type of crew. And we're shorthanded now with, with, uh, Brett leaving and the like. I think it's very important that we do find a city administrator as quickly as possible so that the staff has help and leadership. Uh, and I, I don't think it's too wise to wait till mid-January to, to, uh, hire a new one. It's a nonpartisan, nonpolitical position that, you know, we shouldn't be bringing ideology and politics into a hire. We should be looking for qualifications. Best person who has the ability to lead the city, uh, staff. And we need somebody in here as quickly as possible to help the city and staff. So those are my points.
We have other roundtable items? Mr. Roder?
Thanks, Mayor. I want to first thank our mayor. He stepped in, volunteered to finish up the term of, uh, of, of our past mayor. And I, and to be able to step in to juggle the balls that are, that you have to do as mayor, is a great, he's done a great job in my opinion. Now, in addition to that, he's posting hours to take over as helping in the city administrator. I don't know if officially he could be called the city administrator. But, you know, this guy I know is losing sleep because he cares about this city. That's a rare quality that not a lot of people will do. And that's why I just want to say thank you so much, Mayor, because you have a good heart for this city and you've proven it by your efforts. I, I, I want to thank you, um, very much for that. Also, regarding the city administrator position, we, we, we have to have that person in place. I understand that Brett left copious notes about all the things, all the balls that are rolling right now that he has to juggle. And we need to get somebody in place taking over those balls. There's a lot of critical things going on right now that we can't wait months just to say, whoa. And we can't put it on him. So I am all in favor of getting the best qualified person in place as soon as possible. And that's why we've moved forward. And again, I want to thank our mayor because job well done.
Second.
Probably the LMA beverage of choice for that, don't you? Yeah. Ms. White?
I hear what, uh, the other council members are saying. I don't, I feel like someone coming in who's getting ready as an administrator to move here, to make a big move, would perhaps like to interview with the person they'll be working under and working with. And we don't know who's going to be the new mayor. There is going to be a new mayor. And I think even waiting one week till after the election, just to give some, uh, input.
Statutory question here.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? I have a statutory. I, I thought about that. Can, and we are going to have a new mayor, no, a, a mayor-elect. Can that mayor-elect act in duties before they're sworn in and seated? Now, see, there, there's your thing right there. You know, can, even if we, the new mayor, he would not be able to participate and act as, as a mayor? Till he's sworn in? Yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Motion to adjourn.
Go motion.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight. We appreciate it.